... presenting, making them feel very welcome. And I also want to give a huge thank you to our county judge, Robert Aiken, Mayor Chase, the city's Public Works, Sheriff Mark Gober, who is from Arkansas Department of Corrections out of the Dermot Unit, and E F S Geo Technologies employees, C R boats employees. We had businesses, churches, all out picking up the litter. And the litter has become a real problem. When I started driving route to prepare for this visit on Wednesday, and I'm looking at the garbage in the streets and I'm thinking, I'm selling a dump is what I'm selling. But everybody stepped up. We've been hit hard. The county's been hit hard because of the A D Q shutting down the landfill with the weather problems that we've had. Our trash was much worse than it typically is. But everybody stepped up to the plate and we got things cleaned up in such a short amount of time. It was almost miraculous, really. And I want to thank everyone because that's exactly what it takes for us to be able to sell our community. And we've just got to keep that plan rolling and keep us looking as good as we know we are. So I wanted to thank everyone for that. And I will keep you posted as that one moves forward. It is a really good project. It would see it beautifully within our economic landscape. And so I'm going to work as hard as I can to get this one here. I work on all of them as hard as I can, but eventually we're going to win one. I don't really have any updates on transportation at this time and that we're holding for the step. But I will tell you, well, actually it closed on the night. The State Highway Commission had released the State Transportation Improvement Plan. It's open for public comments through the ninth of March. In that step is Scott and Drive Extension, Highway eighty-three project. It is actually programmed for the weekend next year. It's in the plan, gone through public comments, it's there. As well as the future Interstate sixty-nine corridor, the eastern bypass that's constructed now, the part where we were successful in getting them to move the funds from building to the west to connect to U S sixty-five just near McGee is in the plan for twenty-twenty-two as well. They will, and in that plan, it is to construct two lanes of that. So it'll be much like what we're seeing on five thirty, two pine glows that we'll have connecting to sixty-five near McGee. So most of those things for Drew County are in the step. So that's exciting that we're actually moving forward on two very large projects for us. To pick up on what Dan said, I will be sending out email invitations. The cause of COVID nineteen restrictions, as you know, we can't have as many people in the Fine Arts Center as we typically are, as it will hold. So we are doing by invitation only to council members and commissions to actually see the data firsthand. But we will live stream it through Facebook and U A M's YouTube channel will also be streaming. So everyone in Monticello can actually sit in your living room and watch this, just like we've been doing church for a while now, through U A M's YouTube channels. So I'm going to put that information on our Facebook page. And I've sent the initial invite to press, so I'm hoping everyone will help us to get that information out there. Again, that's at five thirty on the thirtieth in the Fine Arts Center. The other new thing that I have to share with you to kind of take the lid off of what Dan alluded to, U C A's Community Development Institute is probably the most reputable institute across the United States. It's been there for a very long time. Their, this, the C D I certification program is a five-year program. In the first four years, you can become a certified community developer. And then they have their advanced years. And in the advanced year of that, that class takes on a project. And what that project is, is they actually go, they pick a community in the state of Arkansas, and they do what they call a first impressions tour. We're that community this time. So we're now preparing, we don't have a date set for it yet, but Monticello has been selected for C D I's advanced year group to come here and do a first impressions tour. Now, what that is, is this group of community developers who have gone through all these years of training are going to come here and they're going to drive through our community. They're going to visit our businesses. They're going to visit and walk, and they're going to take notes, and then they're going to sit down with us and they're going to give us feedback. And that is huge toward what the planning commission is working on. It's big with what we do in economic development. So I'm excited about that because this will actually give us, you know, what others see in us. You know, we think we know who we are and what we are, but what do others think? So this can be very constructive criticism for us. So I'm excited about that. We are, our reloan fund also continues to grow. We are continuing to market through the state websites as well as through social media. So we are continuing to work on those things. And, but those are the highlights. So I guess this time, if you have questions, I will be most happy to answer.
The first impressions project, is that, I guess, how, what's the criteria for being selected for that? Is just a random draw or is something more to it than that?
Oh, there's a little more to it than that because I had to fill out basically the same five application for that as I did when we were selected for the Community Catalyst Program, which we're still in the process of. But what they look at is number one, how much cooperation does the community have between city and county government and business and economic development? You know, how well are we working together? They look at those things. And they also look at, you know, where are US community? Are you on the uphill slide or are you on the downhill slide? A lot of those things go into play. And because we have made such great progress through the Community Catalyst Program, I do think that's one of the reasons we were selected for the first impressions tour. And I'm really excited about what you'll be hearing on the thirtieth because we really did, we got some pats on our backs for the numbers that we got in the survey despite COVID. I mean, that has really impacted a lot of things. But we really are, you may not think about this, but I want you to. Monticello, we really are doing a better job of working across the board between commissions, the city council, our county government. And that is tremendously important if we do want to continue to improve and grow. There, we can't, in the position that we are, we can't not cooperate with our county government and with our university. I mean, I'm so excited at the level of engagement that we have with U A M right now in all of these things with the Community Catalyst Program, with the walking, the walk audit that we're getting. And this first impressions tour, guys at the university is huge. And of course, last week when our prospect came to town, he wanted to see U A M campus. We can't separate ourselves. We have to embrace our university. We have to respond to their needs just as they are responding to ours. So that's, it is a big deal and that did play a huge role in our selection for this. Any other questions?
I have no question. Earlier you said the expansion for I six nine east. Repeat that a few more times.
Okay, right now.
So funds have been moved from to.
Yes. Several years ago, well, let me back up. Twenty years ago, there was funding that was earmarked from the department, Federal Department of Transportation for the construction of a portion of Interstate sixty-nine, the future corridor in Arkansas. Not near enough money to build all the way from the Mississippi River to Texas, nor was there enough money to build the bridge. As you know, that corridor will also include a new bridge across the Mississippi River. And I believe the price tag several years ago, when I was told was like one point three billion dollars just to build the bridge. So it's a lot of money. We had a small amount of money. And I think it has been about twenty years ago, I'll check the dates on that, that the planning and feasibility studies for it were conducted by the Department of Transportation. And it was decided that they would build the Monticello bypass, which started at Highway two seventy-eight east and circled around to Highway two seventy-eight west, close to where our sports complex is. That's a bypass. That's a bypass. I'm an economic developer. Bypasses kill economies. They don't help them, especially one that's that far south of our retail corridor. Everything we have business is on Highway four twenty-five, two seventy-eight, near that intersection. If we build a bypass around Monticello, it could hurt us. I worried about that for years. When I took this job, I don't even think how many years ago that's been now, that was in the back of my mind. I had always understood that once something like that is programmed in the state transportation plan, it's not ever changed. It's going to happen exactly the way it stood planned. Well, I'm a little bit stubborn and hard-headed and I had this in my head. I talked to my board president, other board members, and I said, would you be okay to start asking questions if it's possible to move that money? Instead of completing this bypass and understand the construction of the eastern part is already under construction at this point. So I started asking the questions. And what I was told is you're going to have to get a consensus in southeast Arkansas, that this is what the most of the county judges and mayors want to have happen. So I spent months visiting with mayors and county judges all around the region. And what I found out is none of them really wanted that bypass to be completed around Monticello either. Some of them said, I don't really have a dog in the hunt. And others said, I really think that it's smarter if we do exactly what we're doing now, and that is complete a new road that would have a sixty-five mile an hour speed limit on it that would connect us from U S Highway sixty-five into Dushay County to Highway four twenty-five south in Monticello. So we were able to get that done. It was a lot of work, but we were able to get that done. So now, when you turn off of U S four twenty-five south in Monticello, when this construction is completed, you can follow that corridor all the way to McGee. It helps with transportation for industries.
They still own that new power line up there. What power line is, they ran, that corridor.
You mean the new transmission line that you just put in? Well, no, it won't be exactly lined up, will it? But it may be close. It may be close. It may be kind, you know, there's a T-line out of Sheco County that runs into Dushay as well, that runs kind of parallel to, yeah, it'll, it may be kind of like.
Okay, okay, I got you now.
Because the maps I've seen, that's what it's looking like.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Questions, other questions?
You know, the thing about the prospect for buildings, when you're closing that, you said you felt really good about who was work. Two other communities in other states, and decisions may come down to what those seats do to attract them, so.
And I don't know yet. When we had.
What are those, what are those things?
Some possibilities?
Yeah. What are those things that they may be doing differently than C M Monticello may be doing?
Well, and Paige can attest to this. When we met with them Wednesday, they didn't really ask a lot of questions about state incentives or local incentives. They did go back to Little Rock to speak with A E B C about tax credits. That's the only thing they were asking about at that point were tax credits at the state end. Now, when it comes down to it, because they're crunching their numbers, they're trying to determine what's it going to cost us to put this facility here as opposed to, transportation costs will be factored in and we can't control that. But I did give them some information that they were not aware of, that I think may have really helped us on that side of it, praying. But once they crunch all of their numbers, that they got a bottom line as far as, you know, the most that they're going to outlay to make it happen. Other communities have a lot deeper pockets than we do. There's some that we compete against that have a dedicated economic development tax and they have millions of dollars in their war chest that they can put toward infrastructure. And understand, it's not writing a check to that company saying, here's so many vehicles you want. It's, okay, you're going to have to spend one point two million dollars with energy to locate electric. I don't think we're there with energy anymore since we have the new T-line, but there's cost for that. There's cost for extending fiber optics. We do have fiber optics right there and outdoors where it's driving, so that's better. But there's lots of those little pieces. And some communities can write a fat check and say, we can offset all that infrastructure cost.
Good.
So Nina, we were the first of the three sites that they.
They did not tell me that.
Do you know the other two sites?
I have a suspicion that one of them is in Georgia. And that's not confirmed. Just a suspicion. But I do know there were two other buildings that were there. But I, I put my heart and soul in it, I'm telling you. I tried to think of every little nuance, every little thing that was on their checklist. And I think I went above and beyond on a couple of them. I worked with my heart, I promise.
It was a good meeting.
I think it was. I felt really good about it. And we did do a driving tour. And it's funny because sometimes it's, it's very literal with the driving tour. They want to know what this building is and where this is. This time, about five minutes in, he was done seeing that stuff and then he just started talking to me one-on-one and asking questions. And I think we developed a good rapport. And that doesn't happen often. And I really felt like it was a positive, not a negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nina. Next up, Chief Fingers.
Nice to see a body here in good health. Just got two things to tell you. Couple after, in your monthly reports, you'll see that we add some projects that were completed at the time of the report. Perhaps those have been done, those camera installations and some intersections. As of this Friday, we'll have seven more. So it'll put us up to a total of fourteen. These are all viewed in dispatch, so we should be able to respond to them quicker, be able to make better assessments of scenes of accidents as well as one parks. Once that project's completed, that was on our to-do list. We've gotten approved for the Eastside Grant. We've also, since that time, we've gotten approved for two more grants. Those are straight up just hundred percent grants. It's going to allow us to purchase DAX cameras, to replace some of the aging car cameras, as well as radar units. Some of those are getting all the two. One other grant to replace portable radios that the officers carry that were all obtained pretty much at the same time, so they don't break at the same time. So what I've been trying to do is replace them incrementally in four or five at a time as long as we go out. And we save the old ones to replace the new ones with paper. So we'll have some backups. Other than that, we'll be applying for another round of COVID money. Opens up May third. We're going to look at some kind of out-of-the-box thinking, some things on that. By my math, which is probably terrible, but somewhere in the ballpark, that puts us at around, and Nikki, if I'm wrong, tell me, puts us around a hundred and seven thousand dollars so far of the grant money that we received. And if our USDA grant, which has been along fairly quickly, I think, I believe the mayor signed some documents the week before last, that'd be hopefully another, around another fifty to go towards the purchase of our cars. That's really all I've got. You've got your monthly reports. One other quick thing, I think we should recognize the members of our community who are outstanding. For those of you who don't know, Pastor Alfred Branch is retiring. He's a pastor of Monmouth Chapel Church, has been for, I believe, he told me, thirty-four years. There's not a finer man that walks these streets. So I know the council feels this way, I know you folks know Pastor Branch, know the quality of the person. And we, on behalf of the police department, we just want to tell him in the meeting, we're proud, we're proud to have him in our community. So he's a good one and we're proud to be associated with him. So any other questions for me? Any questions about the grants, our monthly reports? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Okay, is there anything unfinished business that's not just on the agenda? Aren't you, aren't you, he's not here this morning? He's on vacation this week. So we'll move on to new business. Item A is the discussion with Mr. Freeman, flooding on Davis Street. And she's not here, so Mr. Peter is going to speak on that, I believe.
On what street?
Davis Street.
All the.
Right there.
Like all, I see all the.
You've all got a piece of the same map, right, on your table.
Okay, can you all read the letter that she wrote?
I can try it back on.
Now, Davis Street is that the street off Morcomley that turns back to the east. There's Highland Dairy.
Yes, sir.
Person.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir.
And if you look at the last five pages, you can see the flooding. You literally, if you had a flat boat, if you didn't give it that, you could ride a flat boat down that street.
Which, which rainstorm was this?
Sir.
Do you know which rainstorm this was for this, these last five pages?
Okay, this is.
In a big rain.
In a big, in a big rain, right. This one was in two thousand nineteen. But any large rain, it floods.
Does the water get in the house?
Uh, yes, ma'am. And this is not in one house area. It's all down the street.
So how do these last five pages refer to, you know, how often this occurs? I mean, is it like, I mean, you said two days, maybe it's like two H nine guys or?
I can't answer that, but when you have a large rainfall, one or two days, it floods.
So it happens rather often?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I think when I, when Sid and I was contacted back in two thousand nineteen, he and I went over at different times. And the time I went over, I called L M, which was the superintendent of the city at the time. And he assessed the damage, I mean, the ditches and the properties. And then I think he got Charlie, I mean, Charlie went over and the mayor was contacted and then a plug, engineering was contacted and a plane was ripped. So that's where we all.
There is a ripped plane in place, just?
Yes, sir.
No, it is a, McClellan did a preliminary study. And, and the issues are not just on Davis Street, they're all over Monticello. Some of these open fixtures, you see, that look like sinkholes, that's all over Monticello. Everywhere.
But the question is, is the property has been flooded all over Monticello?
Well, some of it, yes, sir. Not, not quite as severely as Davis Street. But, so I asked McClellan to draw up, give me some preliminary plans, like, you know, how we can fix this. And I thought some plans for them to fix specific spots in Monticello, which we talked about, where there once thirty thousand dollars, another's eighteen thousand dollars, another sixty thousand dollars. Those take care of one specific address, okay? But that's going to cause, from what I understand, what they explained to me, that would cause problems upstream and downstream in those locations. So I said, well, what can we do, how we fix that? Well, they came back with a, I believe they divided the city into four phases, okay? And they talked about taking one basin at a time and fixing drainage in that area and moving to the next one. The way they talked about it, and this was in two thousand nineteen, those are more affordable and easier bites to take, although they're not going to be, they're going to be very expensive. Anyway, that's where we all, and COVID happened and.
Okay, so you said something about basins. What do you mean basins?
Well, the city has maybe natural areas that drain and they divided the city into those basins.
With this proposal being already brought to the board, and McClellan, I think, one issue is that we need to look at, maybe not, I mean, it's being flooded, but was being flooded. This is the only one that I know of that the whole neighborhood is flooded.
It's flooded.
Yeah, as far as flooded wooded area or something like that, with flooded towers in this area. Now, I sort of forgot or whatever, but I don't actually recall McClellan giving.
They didn't, they never came and presented that because by the time it got done and we started, COVID happened and nobody was going anywhere, nobody was presenting it anywhere. And. And what we did, we were working on the levee, and the post office, that was, walls were about to fall down, and Sufan, some were doing stuff with ADQ. So, we had these other huge expensive, and we didn't know how much they were going to cost, projects going on that, you know, when I went and looked, I don't remember being told that people's houses were flooding. But, but I put drainage citywide on my whiteboard in my office because it's a serious problem, and I know we need to deal with it.
Then, maybe with McClellan, you, you mentioned the four basins, you know what you said?
I, I think it's four, maybe three, but yes.
Did they identify where the?
Worst?
Worst list is?
Not at that many that we have.
Okay, so we don't know if Davis Street is in, will be considered the worst place?
Right, right, right. There are several, there are several places that are bad. I mean, we're just going to have to pick one, go to work there, and deal with the problems that that causes in the other basins, and then pick another basin and do that.
I would be willing to admit that this Davis Street area is probably the worst because we haven't heard that.
Anybody else can make a point of it.
Areas. So, my recommendation would be that we go to the basin route, but to start at the basin where Davis Street is included.
Right.
And then, because, I mean, if we go the other route, we're going to be named first. I mean, there's a lot of areas, islands property, that's on some of them, that are really close to being like a Davis Street. But, so if we do something there that makes this worse, well, then we're going to flood a lot of other people out. So, I like the basin idea, and I like starting wherever that basin is, with Davis Street.
Okay, well, I, I called McClellan about three weeks ago and said, okay, I'll get ready, this is our next project, so, and hey, that. We're trying to email me these, this map of these basins today, but they didn't get drawn this till almost five o'clock, so I couldn't get them.
So, what, what is the plan we want to present, present to us?
Uh, hopefully, a plan to fix the drainage in a basin.
And there's a plan in place?
Well, I hope so, yeah, I mean, it should.
I mean, I'm just not saying either, or here, here, or.
Yeah, it'll get tested, yeah, but yeah. And that's the, that's the only reason we're working on it, we need to know how to start and what it's going to cost.
Is this area in a flood zone?
Uh, it is.
It is in a flood zone?
It is. Which is why I brought, which is why I have this map pulled up, because this blue is all flood zone. And this blue is a flood zone. And, you know, it's really not that far from here to here. But this is Davis Street, and it's right, I think that flood zone goes, you know, right in here.
You know, I think it was Monday this week, we got an email from the OEM Boardman, from Mr. Bricker, talking about the subdivision of emergency management hazard mitigation grant program. And in there, it specifically says, funding for, yeah. So, it'll be contemplated if that's something that we can apply for, if it helps in these areas?
Well, you can't, yeah, I mean, that obviously, we would apply that if it fits, if we fit the criteria. But we've got to have, but you can't just apply to this, so, you know, having a plan, about having a process, and about having lots of information from lots of other entities. And this, in this situation, probably for engineers.
I must admit, I'm not familiar with this process, but this indicates that what you need to send in is a notice.
Notice and a statement first, correct.
Which deadline for that is April twelve. I would say, I think we want to get them to help and see what we can do, is make sure we don't miss that deadline. Because it's worse than about twenty-five. In this area, do we know what inch or tributary or whatever is causing the problem?
Godfrey Ditch is back there, but it's.
What do we know from my, from my understanding, from what I seen? The, the drain covers the front of the house, where the water drains. It cuts through two people's yard. And it collapsed to where it got the drain in two blocks. So, that causes the whole neighborhood to flood. Yes, the one they developed it of, whatever things, you know, it, how, how they done it is there. But, uh, the, from my understanding, from what I saw then, the actual problem is between two hours. What drain ran underground to Godfrey Ditch, which separates the houses from Jordan Park. Not just the houses, the Jordan Park. So, I had taken the water so slow, everything flooded, the water was going to flow sooner than it was going to now.
Do you remember if that ditch runs under Davis Street, is it Marydale?
Yes, what it does, where it comes beside Ms., where it comes beside Bridget's house, it's, it's, it's like a thirty-six inch cover. And right back in the backyard, there's a concrete where they, they, what it done, it turns. They got a concrete, like a little pond poured, so it, it drained, but it also gives relief. And then it turns and goes right down Marydale and, and to Godfrey Ditch right there. What it is, there's two ditches that runs there. There's Godfrey Ditch, and then there's the ditch that runs right through here from, right off of two seventy-eight. And those two meet at the backside, at the backside of Jordan Park. And what it is, from where it comes by Mr. Bridget's house, is this galvanized pipe. It's been there for years, the bottom's rotted out, and it's curled up. And it's, it's started rotting in the, in the sinkholes. Then you get right down behind her house, where they built that little concrete pond, it's like, what it does, it turns it, because all the water was going straight to get in the other house, and there was some, you know, brush there. And we cleaned it up, and it's got the water, because a lot of leaves and stuff is in it. But once we got that, it started helping some, but during a heavy rain, it, it's not a whole lot. The pipe, what it does, it goes from a thirty-six to a twenty-four. What it does, it starts, steps down, and it's filling it up, and it's not letting it go as fast. But yes, I walked over there, uh, because right there at her back door, she had a piece of plywood, because there was a
Sinkhole?
A sinkhole there, and she didn't want anybody following it, yes. But what it is, like I said, it starts off a big pipe, then it goes to a smaller one, when it makes this turn. And a pipe restricts it a whole lot faster, you know, it restricts it more than a open ditch would, because you just got to force it all down through that.
So, Charlie, are these sinkholes being caused because they're holes in these covers?
Uh, yes, the covers, the galvanized, they, they've been there probably fifteen, twenty years.
Like the cemetery?
And they just, water runs through it with all the, all the, with, you know, I guess.
What happened to the one in the cemetery?
In, in open cemetery.
Wow.
That's called a cemetery, is that, that ditches up, because it's.
So, are those covers on personal property, or?
It, it's, it's right there on the line, yes. The ditch is, the ditch on Davis, you know, I agree with them, I have seen it over the top of the road, because I had to go in there, help unstop covers when it rained. But the ditch that comes down, and it turns and goes through, if the covers was in good shape, it would take it. You know, because for years, that, it done good, and the older they got, they started, you know, collapsing, and and then the dirt where the sinkholes are, they don't wash down into the pipe, and it's, it's not filthy in the pipes, and it's not letting, uh, full flow.
Are the covers on personal property, or property dock?
Yes.
Which is part of the problem?
Yeah.
Yeah, my question is going to be, uh, Mr. City Attorney, they got a couple of this, there was an ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago or so about drainage, classified ditches and everything. And that, I'm not mistaken, identify responsibilities, is that right? So, that's why I was trying to get where these are at, because we do have an ordinance on the books and addresses.
There's a hierarchy, basically, the larger the drainage ditch, the more active the city gets, the less the damage.
Repeat that, so again?
The larger the drainage, generally speaking, ordinance, I guess, or speaker itself, but just conceptually, the larger the drainage ditch, the more people impacted it's in a higher receiver, and I, the same way, I think there's a third tier or something.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly, but, uh, I mean, I, I do agree that it is an issue. And I do think that we should pursue some remedy to, to McClellan, and try to apply for this grant process to see what he can do. But I do think we need research to make sure that it's something that goes against that ordinance. If it is contrary to that ordinance, and if it's something we feel that we still need to address, then we just have to make amends somehow.
Mr. Mayor, almost here, since you can say this, is this affecting or funding residents on both sides of Davis Street or?
Hold on, wait. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You turn off, after he, where we at?
Just turn off.
Yeah, we're holding, well, we'll talk to you up in there. You turn off there, probably, I said, probably fifty yards or so. From that point on, going east toward the park, you know, and then, or that ride, Davis, it's flooded.
If we get a, if we get a two and a half, three inch rain, you know, being on call all them times, I went over there and stopped some. The two places that floods, that I know of right offhand that floods with the big rain, is Davis Street and the apartments behind Walmart. Because that, you know, every single, the, the lower floors, buildings of the, of the two stories, they flood. If they flood, Davis Street floods. If it's a small rain, it's, it don't. But if we get a three inch rain, those two are the main two that flood, that I know.
Those are in a flood plain.
Yes.
If it's a small rain, those houses on Davis Street, its backyards are flooded.
Yeah, the, the backyards, it, it's not getting in the houses, but if you get a big rain, it gets into the houses.
And it's something that planning commission needs to address too, about, you know, what create requirements for contractors. When you, if you're going to build a subdivision, then you need to make sure the drainage is sufficient to support, whatever you put there, and the, the weather that comes our way, and that's all.
Well, one thing I think we need to actually look at, I mean, seriously look at, is taking care of this issue here because it's affecting people's houses. I know you said something like there may be grants or whatever, but that's, we have to wait on the grant. Do this, we have the money, we need to address this issue properly first. I mean, we can wait, like, it's been two thousand nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, to do a rollup. It is twenty, it's two years now. So, I think we need to really seriously look at how to resolve that. And I know we said earlier about being on private property. But I talked to a, a lawyer, minister, or whatever, and he said it was a senior attorneys, more of a senior attorney question when it comes to dealing with private property. But also, if it affects other properties, then you got to weigh that, you know, other people's property succeed, even if they go on some other private property facing problem. And right now, I think we're at a point where it's on one person's property, actually affecting, affecting twelve, thirteen houses. I've been talking to that. Well, even what they said, well, L M will tell to me that, uh, the pipes are not large enough to, uh, to push that water, to hold that water. So, therefore, whether it's on this free property or not, it's going to flood. It's going to flood.
Those pipes are just like, if you take a bottle of water, if you turn it upside down, yes, only so much water's going to come out, and it's going to have to start catching for air. If you force some water through it, it's got to get air in order for it to flow, because it won't do it. When I was a kid, I was raised, back back here, I used to play down here. And there, it used to be an open ditch that went through there, and then over a period of time, they piped it. I'm not for sure who piped it, but it was a, it was a small ditch, it wasn't a big ditch, it was let it flow. But when they went to developing over towards Marydale, they wanted to change it all up, they put pipes in. But that's been forty, fifty years ago.
We tried to find, um, Ron Wood, for me, see what you figure out, what contractor developed that street or that area, and that's all we can figure out.
Yeah, I think that probably been there, uh, the, I mean, late fifty?
Yes. I got a map that goes back to like nineteen oh two, and well, actually, in this area was just some of the, the main part of the city, because the city limits used to be at Locken Street right there, that's where they had.
So, you think Davis Street was developed back in nineteen?
Yeah, yeah, early nineteen hundreds, yes.
But that area where you, where you're talking about, those brick homes going north of Marydale, I think those houses are.
That, those are newer than what it is on Davis Street.
So, that infrastructure would have been, the contractor did develop that, or did, correct, which would have been, you know.
While researching this, I found houses that were built nineteen forty-six all the way to nineteen eighty-four on Davis Street. And there was no contractor or covenants for that, but just north of it, or Marydale, it was. And they were built from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-something.
What's, what's the street that, that's just south of that, that runs behind Holmes Chapel? And east, and that ends there at, at Godfrey Ditch, that's Davis Street? Yes, yes. They run east and west together, huh?
East and west is from Trotter.
Trotter's from here.
Yeah.
Just, just, I mean, that's in the same area, does that area?
Yes, sir, it floods. It floods all the way from behind, uh.
That's right, smack.
From the, we're doing.
Church, from the church, yeah. Holmes Chapel Church, oh, Holmes. Yeah, yeah, Holmes Chapel Church, all of them.
There's an inch there off of Connolly, you got the memory.
Yes, sir.
There's that, and the radio place.
And they've, they've got problems too.
Yeah, and then it, uh, it does not hold, uh, the water as well, and.
Well, I could ever what Mr. James suggests, we get, and what you've already talked about, and credit them back involved, and same time, we could do search, our resolutions, to see just what we can, can, can do, and that's, and that's, you get, and it's forward.
Which one?
Uh, the, the, the.
Okay.
See, there's.
I have a question. I, I just, just, I, and, but certainly, Senator Gray said what I was about to suggest, it seemed like there's a consensus here to make a report that that needs to have McClellan to look at the, at, at the area in terms of the, for all that, what all the details, what all the costs. Second, is while they're doing that, if they could look at this specific area and see if there is something we can do quicker and not as expensively as the whole nation, to alleviate this particular problem, it may not be. And at the same time, Wiggly makes a good point, that we want to make sure that as we fix this, we don't create something else. And the engineer can, can help us with that. Overlay their suggestions with the drainage ordinance, to make sure that's all under the ordinance to proceed, and the engineer, and, and of course, the council. So, to do that, and also, get all that grant thing, all that's done, is a, is a statement.
Yes.
You know, if there's not a lot of new developments to get that file, then there's no harm in getting the file. And, um, maybe, and most were wrong, I think, we needed to go forward, and like I say, I think, Senator Gray basically, uh, said that, and those are the four things, that seem like a consensus, that we can see.
So, the, the information that McClellan has sent you on the time this evening today, do we have the privilege to take the work at the, where they already examined, or not early?
Sure, if I, if I was having our, like, study, we didn't stop this till almost five today, and I can't find my copies, I think he left them. But, you know, it was two thousand nineteen, and my desk is quite a bit since then. But, yeah, I'll go get them, I'll get them to you. I mean, it's, it's not going to really take you, it's a big mountain city, it's tight.
Okay, so he didn't make any real statements to the area that made a difference?
He just knew, if I just divide it so that I could wipe off one chunk at a time, and, you know, figure out how to fix this, angle over here, and how to fix this, I mean, that was all of us, it was very preliminary. But it was the beginning. I mean, that was all of us, it was very preliminary, but it was the beginning.
And this was a, um, repeat that, that grant thing you said that we have was the first problem?
April twelve.
Twelve.
The deadline to submit your notice of intent is, uh, April twelve. But, uh, it was an email from Jesse Griffin, I think he sent it to all the council.
I saw it.
Yeah.
I saw it.
And, uh, in that, in there is a detachment, a detachment.
Okay, anybody else have anything else to say about this?
Only thing I have to say on behalf of Mrs. Freeman, I think, the council for listening and, uh, discussing the issue.
Thank you. All right, um, so we'll move on to the next one, uh, resolution for the, uh, office office thing, can I get someone to introduce that resolution please?
I'll introduce it and maybe suspend rules and make a title on it.
Thank you, sir. Um, Dr. Clinton, will you please call for, or can we just, let's, we're gonna suspend rules, so let's, uh, all those in favor of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, uh, okay, Dr. uh, Dr. Little, no, you don't have a problem, this term, sorry.
Resolution authorized application for plant, basement portion and fully afforded to a school, on the office building.
Okay, I can fill in the blanks.
Yeah.
Uh, one to, first paragraph, first one, there is, there is a grant that you're going to show AHP, on this one, preservation society. To reimburse the city two thirds of said repair cost.
Two, sixty-seven percent.
Um, and then, it is by the city, now council's office, there is authorized and ready to apply for a grant from AHP to reimburse the city seventy-six thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars. For basement washroom rental on historic, on some of those things. And you can see in the second paragraph, total cost is estimated to be one hundred fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars.
Repeat that, reimburse that.
Seventy-six thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars.
One of the grant was available from whom?
Um.
Dates? Well, it's a, the grant thing was available from, obviously.
Oh, AHP, oh, I can tell this for a preservation. Is there any, are there any questions about this, any discussion?
So if we get this and do these repairs, and that building should be in good shape. Is there some repair inside?
As far as we know, it needs a lot of repair inside because of the moisture in the walls.
Stop the moisture.
But if we stop the moisture, then we can take our time if we need to, to repair other items, yeah.
That's in the basement though.
This one is, yeah. Flooding in the basement, that's, that's what this is supposed to do. Am I, I'm understanding correctly, right, Nathan? This grant is supposed to stop the flooding in the basement. And they're literally working on the tug pointing right now. They're out there, I'm gonna put out there, David, see Adam Jones, and he's white, covered in mortar that he's cutting out of the joints between the bricks.
So that, that forty thousand, I mean, how, how does it work? We, I, they reverse this on the grant or?
Yeah, I think so, this is a, we have to front the money, I have a hundred fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-one. And we'll get a reimbursement of seventy-six thousand eight hundred fourteen.
Okay. See, where does that one fifteen come out of?
It, well, Nathan suggested it come out of the war chest or, um.
Is that not, uh, the war?
The war chest.
War chest, and then the grant just go back in, do that.
Right.
Have we applied for that grant yet?
Uh, that's what this is about. I can make sure to apply for it.
Move to, uh, resolution.
Sir.
Thank you, Dr. Clinton, call for a place.
Yes, ma'am. Clarissa Pace. Cedric Leonard. Michael James.
Yes.
Al Pierre.
Yes.
Mark Kiner.
Yes.
Craig McCray.
Yes.
Mike Wiggly.
Yes.
Claudia Hartness.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that resolution passes. Um, next, we have resolution to declare distance of five oh nine East Davis Street. Um, can I get someone to introduce this resolution please?
I'll introduce it, then move to suspend the rules, move to title on it.
Thank you, sir, can I get a second? Michael James, still to you.
Yes.
Um, all those in favor of bringing up Todd Lowly, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Aye, Mr. Turner?
A resolution finding and clearing improvement situated on certain real property of paddle nine East Davis Street in the city of Long Island. The license program that misses to be effective in thirty days, and operated in the basement of the city and in provision of land for expenses incurred by the city again for other purposes.
Thank you, any questions?
Mr. Rogers, can you, can you, can you, communication or progress or?
I don't have it with me right now, but the certified mail was sent out and, uh, they were given more than thirty days' notice, uh, to appear tonight. And, uh, have had no communications.
No contact with him?
No contact, now, I will say that, uh, in the past, and I will say it, at least two years ago, uh, they were complained on about audit seven fifty-six, and I did the same thing with the certified mail and all that, and she did reply and she did clean it up. But this time it's no reply. Is everybody familiar with this place is?
No, sir, it wasn't asked that.
Okay, you know where this, the, the old cleaners was down here on Gang Street that got tore down last year, so we're right next to it.
Yeah, but anyone saying that?
No.
Say it.
There's no water, no electricity to the building, there's two abandoned cars and just junk everywhere and the house is falling in. Sir?
That would vastly improve the looks that it would be able to. And sir.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, uh, give me a second, thank you. Uh, Dr. Milton, will you please call for a?
Clarissa Pace.
Yes.
Cedric Leonard.
Yes.
Michael James.
Yes.
Al Pierre.
Yes.
Mark Kiner.
Yes.
Craig McCray.
Yes.
Mike Wiggly.
Yes.
Claudia Hartness.
Yes.
Okay, next we have, uh, we have a skip to item number F, the, miss items number C and E one, why ready? Um, so we call resolution to revise the playing handbook, um, section four point one five, six point one seven, and it's six eleven that they're skipping right there.
Yeah, because that one.
There's six eleven and six twelve, for some reason, did not translate from Governor Martin's office to the city computers.
Six twelve is okay.
Oh, it is okay.
We're just deleting six twelve. Six eleven is the one that somehow, I don't know what happened.
It, yeah, it, it didn't translate, it didn't transmit. Uh, so we're gonna talk about four point one five, six point seven, and six point one two.
Six point one two is a deletion. It, it says it at the back of the resolution, that we're deleting six point one two, because it would have been covered in six eleven.
So I'm gonna get somebody to introduce this resolution please.
Um, maybe we, uh, suspend the rules, make a title on it.
Thank you, thank you, all those in favor of bringing up Todd Lowly, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Thank you. Okay, discussion questions?
I'm curious, the background, one of them were updating.
Why we're updating four point one five?
Yes.
Okay, um, it was my understanding that coming into this year, um, that we were meant to bring policies to the council individually that, um, currently conflicted with our practices. So, that is why they've been being brought to the council in small groupings like this. Um, I know that we have an HR committee that met, uh, for the first time this month, I understand that there's that process going on also. But these specific policies that I personally have picked out to bring to you all to have them updated are something that affects the day to day. Um, catastrophic sick leave specifically, the one in our current handbook, um, it's obsolete, we can't even use it. Um, because in that policy, it states that you would have had to donate to the bank in order to, um, qualify for time. Well, all the employees that had donated to the bank ha, are either retired, or they've been terminated for whatever reason. So they no longer even exist in our active workforce. So, um, our catastrophic sick leave bank is maxed out based on our current policy. Um, so that's the purpose of four point one five being updated. Um, set, six point seven, the purpose of that one being updated, uh.
The employee doesn't own, that's okay, that's okay. So, we currently have no employees that have contributed to the bank?
They did last year because the mayor wrote a letter to internally amend the process at which we accept catastrophic sick leave donations and did an internal adjustment to our practices, so we could open it back up because we had a few employees that direly needed assistance um, for serious ongoing health conditions that kept them out of work for longer than the twelve weeks of FMLA time. So, in order to help them, be able to receive their benefits still, receive their normal paychecks during that time, um, she made that judgmental call, so we did type up a letter. Um, but going through the end of last year, trying to get the other handbook passed, and it didn't happen, we reverted back to what was in our current written handbook. Um, so I'm coming back to you all today to ask to update it to what we were doing last year prior to that whole conversation happening. So that we can open it back up for the employees that needed it.
So, in, what you propose, what you say is to do not, is to donate sick leave in the old policy, so they can donate sick leave vacation or comp?
Actually, the reason is that you don't, you can't allow that, is because state law says you can't allow somebody to donate to the catastrophic sick leave bank, vacation and comp time. And whenever I first came to the city, I did look at our sick leave bank and our policy, and there were a few employees that had donated some comp time and vacation time, and I had to give that time back to them.
Okay.
Because we should have never allowed them to donate that to begin with.
Gotcha.
So there were some, a little bit of caveats that were included in our original policy that shouldn't have probably been in there.
In your proposal, paragraph four dot fifteen dot one.
Uh-huh.
Uh, your sentence says, uh, medical condition employees vows apartment, or dependent child, or other dependent has to find within the bank. Where is that definition?
It is defined, it should be defined at the, at the end of this section. See how there's a star next to that dependent, the little asterisk? If you go to the very end, I define them. So if it, if it's an immediate.
Six point seven.
Yeah, it's right above the six point seven.
Child who may be claimed as dependent under the Arkansas contract.
That's it, okay, so there should be two stars at that, at that point. Cause the term doesn't have any stars.
No, it has one, the dependent.
Well, the one says an immediate family member is defined.
A dependent medical event.
And then the two stars said the child.
Okay, yeah, it should be two stars off the one star, I have one star to mark two.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And then, as I read this, you get over to fourteen dot one five dot four. Application for use, your first paragraph says shall be defined, but isn't that what we're doing in four dot one five dot one? It's defined. It seems a little redundant, but four dot one five dot four, the first paragraph says things it's not said in four dot one five dot one.
Okay, four point one five dot one is defining what a catastrophic illness is considered.
Right.
The four point one five point four is defining what the sick leave would be used for in regards to the application process. Like the rules, like how you would classify the application of the person to find, for.
Well.
I guess you're saying it's a little bit repetitive?
Well, that and plus, the first paragraph and, uh, four point one five point four refers to a participating employee which exceeds two weeks' probation as documented. Doesn't say anything about that in the question. And then it refers to a spouse or dependent child has to find in some IRS publication five oh one, which is not referenced anywhere else that I can. So it just seems a little bit kind of out of left field to me.
The dependent child that's defined under the IRS publication five oh one is the same as what is defined under the FMLA. It's the same thing, it's just a different way of saying it.
Okay. So.
And, once again, four point one five point one is the definition of what a cata, we're saying a catastrophic illness is. And four point one five point four, that is telling you that these are the qualifications, that the applications that go to the committee are gonna be considered after. So it's getting a little bit more specific.
So in summary, excuse me, in some, I'm trying, thank you. In summary, someone can give away their sick leave time to a person who has a condition that they need more time, and so, my.
Not directly, they would have to donate it to the same and go through the application process to apply for time, and it has to go through that process to, to the committee, yes.
So we know we are, we're fine apart to saying, this is what we're going to do.
Yes, this is how it's going to be reviewed, basically, it's giving the how, not the what, but the how, I guess, is what it's doing, I've forgotten it down. Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Can I just expand on what she was saying? In the old policy, it specifically said that leave could not be designated, but it doesn't say that in your policy. Cause I did point that, I did see that as well.
It should say that somewhere.
I may have overlooked it, but I, I read it a couple of times, and I never saw any where it said leave could not be designated. In, kind of along those lines, in your, in yours, you reference conditions that make them unacceptable. So you have an employee that experiences a catastrophic illness or has a need, but if they have some disciplinary type action or some other conditions, it makes them ineligible, if I'm reading this correctly, is that right?
Say, say that one more time, about last time?
That, if they, if they have some conditions dealing with either disciplinary, some action, or have, I guess, some poor attendance, that they're not eligible
Correct.
to receive.
Correct.
That seems a bit harsh to me, so I mean.
I don't, I don't see it that way, I just see that it says that, um, that you're not being disciplined.
And pull up the current, if not, the.
I heard it's what it says.
Okay, it does say that, yes. There are guidelines that are included in here that do say that if you have been counseled for four minutes, um, if you have been disciplined for a behavioral reason, that you may not be eligible for leave, for time from the bank, that is correct.
But not necessarily so.
But not necessarily so, but those are things that are considered whenever the application.
Maybe ambiguous, but I think I see what you're, what you're saying, all, all a person needs to do is to say, this is not, I'm not being, uh, I'm not abusing my leave. Is that what, isn't that what you're saying?
No, no.
No, this is saying that, that we have doc- written documentation showing that that individual has been corrected action, that they've been written up, um, or they have excessive days off in the past for abusing their time off where they didn't have time to cover it, sick, vacation, whatever, pay time, and they've just been taking off of work. Does that make sense? They've just been doing it on their own and not, and they didn't have time to cover it. So, this is saying that they would be eligible to apply for time from this bank if those scenarios occurred for that individual.
I can see it.
It is giving guidelines for that, where there are some people who would not qualify for those reasons, yes, that is correct.
I can see, I get your motivation behind that, but I guess to me, you know, I, I separate that type of action, discipline, enforcement of policies and attendance. I think that, to me, is a separate issue. I mean, if you have someone that is in some type of catastrophic state, I just think that puts us at a really bad light to say, no, you're not going to get this.
Okay.
Because you missed the deal, so.
So, I mean, that, that's just my thing.
Well, and it does say may, it doesn't say will. So, that's discretion of this HR committee.
Well, note point two is that the HR person has discretion to grant eight weeks without committee approval. There's no, I would think at least in that regard too, you would want you after the fact to somehow support their actions or decisions in that as well. So, I mean, that's, that's a one-person committee, you know, up to eight years.
I can kind of see it one way, but I do, I do understand the intent of what you're doing because I know if I was an employee donating, donating my time, my sick time, it was unused. I would want it to be used by someone who is in good faith, who's doing the best they can and doesn't have any disciplinary issues or any attendance issues. Uh, because that, that could become a detriment to the programming and up to set because you would have a lack of participation.
Well, we have participation now.
Well, there you go.
So, but I mean, I, I do see it both ways as well, I mean, I, I, I concur.
Well, I can't use the real world example because, like I said, we opened it back up because we had a few employees that truly need time. There was one individual had a very serious health condition. They were out of work for over four months. Um, they had exhausted all of their time. However, the reason they had exhausted all of their time is because prior to them getting this illness, they, every time there would occur sick time, they would immediately take it. Every time they would get vacation time, they immediately take it. So, there's a little bit of management responsibility there too, I, I understand that. But at the same time, the employees have a responsibility to make sure that they are trying to save some of their time in case they have something that occurs. Now, with that being said, sick leave, you know, there are certain things that only sick leave can be used for. So, that's why the sick leave policy, they need a brand offer note to show that they truly were out for a qualifying reason for sick leave. In the past, that wasn't happening, that is happening now. Okay, so there are things like that that would coincide with this to make it work. You can't, one policy isn't going to work on its own standalone, wherever it's regarding accrual time and leave time. They all have to be cohesive and mesh together or they, they won't work. Um, you don't have to do catastrophic sick leave bank. I'm asking that we do this because it did work last year for those employees that were on it. Um.
How many did we have, Patty?
Um, we had three long-term, we had a few that needed it intermittently. Um, so we did have that as well.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying I don't think it's a good idea. I'm just questioning and bringing to light, I guess, some things that I think might be problematic.
Right.
But that's currently written, that's-
Well, I would like to say, David, I don't know, someone like Bill Jacob, and I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking the discipline part, it sounds like a disciplinary action or service than sickness because the term catastrophic itself means, I am trying to do this. Although they may have tried to be off of work and that's their, I think that's their individual thing that, that to me, it comes as a personal thing on the individual, as long as they're not, um, you know, doing their job or whatever, bringing harm, but to get sick and then it's like a disciplinary action to me the way that it reads, unless we're going to say something specific that we're not, you know, we can read into this, we can try to figure it out, but if I'm an employee, I'm not sure I want you to try to figure out a sentence. If you want to say what fits or what makes it eligible, I think it needs to be more specific than-
Well.
With the language that we're concerned with, uh, paragraph four point one five point four at bottom of page, is that where we are?
No, I'm at four point one nine point two.
Um, yeah.
Um, note-
In your request catastrophic leave, your department has verified that you have not been disciplined for leave abuse or you must provide a copy of your position's diagnosis detailing your-
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at and that reads to me as a little bit, it's pretty mandatory. That if you've been disciplined for leave abuse, um, that's not the line. But if you've been disciplined for leave, you know, to be eligible to reconsider, your department has verified you've not been disciplined for leave abuse. If you can't clear that burden, then you-
You're not eligible.
You're not eligible.
And let me back up by saying-
It's two years, that's the same time.
Well, let me, let me back up by saying also, this also gives these employees time in addition to their already federally qualified time of FMLA and twelve weeks of unpaid leave. That's federal law. So, that already, an employee that has a serious ongoing health condition, they're going to give that already.
That's just, that's not paying, that's not paying.
We, we use that concurrently with that twelve weeks vacation time, whatever. But that, this is, the intent of this is if they don't have time whenever that starts because they worked for the city for a year and they qualify for FMLA, they have that serious ongoing health condition and they need compensation, pay, in- instead of being out of work without pay, because FMLA protects their job for twelve weeks unpaid. But this is us as the city saying, we're going to do more for our employees. We're going to add this extra fringe benefit to our employees. So, and like I said before, you don't have to do it, I mean, it's, it's an option.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay, I don't think it's, I don't think it's being said right here, the lay down guidelines and whatever. Okay, I, some of the problems like this, but why is it that, you got to have this? Just say for instance if, uh, first day got sick and I had X amount of sick days on the book. Why is this person coming in and saying, I want to give him two of my, two of my sick days?
Directly?
Directly.
Um.
Then he was eliminated. Because you got, first you got to get it at the bank you wanted to get it. If you don't have it at the bank, you can't get it.
You mean donate it to the bank and then that was the same, that was the same, to give it directly to that other employee?
You want to direct, if five or six people say, we want to give Mr. Charlie two of my days, not the child that they work with.
I think if you, I think if you do something like that, you're opening yourself up more for discrimination.
No, but that's your day, I, I, I sit in the choice. So, right now, when you go to talking about the disciplinary action, two years or whatever.
Okay, well, let me-
But I say I want to give you two days of my sick day.
Let me give you a financial example, how that can hurt you, okay? Let's say you have a, I'm going to use a, a police officer as an example because they get a lot of time. Okay, they can occur federal law, they can carry a lot of time, fire, fireman as well. Let's say one of them come in and say, oh, I want to donate, I'm retiring, I'm getting ready to leave and I want to donate X amount of hours to Joe in Parks. Okay, well, this person's retiring and leaving, but Joe hasn't, but they're getting ready to leave the city also. Well, now, they get paid out for all that time, so then we can all check.
No, no, it's for, it's for sick, it's not for putting in a bank account.
No, no, I'm talking about they, they get it on their books for their time to take.
Okay.
You just donated directly to that other employee, so it's no longer that police officer's, now it's Joe's in Parks. He has it on the books to use sick time for his illness.
I see, I, I don't see, that's not what I'm saying.
Because if you don't have it go through the bank, then that person automatically-
I think I see what you're saying, that it's someone that is qualified for catastrophic.
Right.
And they're due, and people are donating for their cause, not just some average person.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but Joe in Parks qualified for catastrophic leave. So, this police officer said, I'm going to give Joe, he needs time to cover this catastrophic illness. That's what you were suggesting, can they not directly donate to that individual? That's the scenario I'm trying to explain. So, this police officer donates, let's just say, three hundred hours to Joe. So, Joe gets that time on his, on his books, he has that three hundred dollars. Okay, now, if he doesn't use it all, I'm, I'd say that- It doesn't go through the bank.
We're talking about a specific case, so if we have an employee who has a catastrophic requirement to be off of work and that policeman recognizes that this individual, we're not putting it in his, in his bank for future use, we're talking about a specific time now. So, if I got, there's an employee who has a catastrophic illness that's from requiring him or her to be away from work past the twelve weeks of family leave, then I think what Cedric's asking is, why can't that person, for that specific reason, give it that time to that specific employee for that specific reason? Not the bank, not to the, not, not to the bank, but because, or you're, 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 you're sick, okay? You've extended your family leave, you're without pay, all right? So, Cedric wants to give you X amount of hours because you're going to continue on that, on that catastrophic deal.
So, what about Tracy over here? Is he going to give Tracy the same amount of time?
I'm, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain what I'm saying.
I get what he's saying, I get it.
So.
I'm trying to get you all to understand where I'm coming from because if you allow that to happen, I don't think that's a very good practice.
I'm, I'm gonna screw that up.
Then you're gonna, then you're gonna have, okay, I got that time, he gave it to me. But then you have Tracy over here, who needs time too and he doesn't want to give Tracy time and there's no time to give Tracy because nobody else works, nobody likes Tracy.
So, let's, so, so-
Nobody like nobody, ain't nobody give.
Well.
So, it's not a-
Like I said, you don't have to do catastrophic.
So, are we, is anybody giving to a problem? Are there any hours for the bank now?
Um, there, it's frozen and there's about, I believe there's like nine hundred something hours off the top of my head.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
But there's nobody giving at this time?
No, because it's frozen. I can't let anyone donate if it's frozen.
What about the employee? All right, so.
Mine's frozen, you?
It's frozen, there's a policy says you can only donate three hundred twenty hours and you can't donate if, um, you-
You can only donate three hundred twenty hours to a person?
It's maxed out, basically, and because it's maxed out, nobody else can donate, based on our current causing, our current handbook. So, this would open it back up to allow employees to donate. There doesn't have to be a max on how much hours are in the bank. Employees can donate, should donate how much ever over time.
I bet both of them are tabled.
We had people that had used the bank now, right?
Last year, when I wrote a, um, letter to change the policy to allow, um, a couple of our employees who were desperate and really needed, I, I allowed that to happen.
And the letter stated because they had not contributed to the bank, that they were eligible?
My letter, my letter stated, I don't even remember now, that we would open the catastrophic leave bank up because, and I don't think it said why.
Yeah, well.
It did say because of those, that one employee.
It did say why, it gave guidelines as to how we were going to manage it and this mirrors that.
But the reason we did it is because we had an employee who had a catastrophic illness and, um, was going to run out of time and had a family and-
That's the thing, that's children.
Well, we, now, Mr. Leonard, we, we did that across the board for everybody that had any kind of catastrophic event in part. We didn't pay the children, absolutely not, we gave it to everybody.
I have a list of employees that were on catastrophic leave, sick leave simultaneously at the times through that year, of all different departments, of all different nationalities, of all different genders, of all different everything, so it was used and utilized equally across the board within the workforce.
Ms. Frager has a comment.
In the event that Mr. Leonard motion tabled this, he meant with favor, um, on this, there seemed to be some sentiment on the council to turn to allow direct transfer of the grant signed. I view that if not, if you, then it's why you want participation.
Wait, would you speak up, please, that was-
If you were to do that, it's why you want participation, because you know who your time is going to be, that might, might be a positive. One of the things that, that-
Participation is not a problem. It was a problem when it was founded.
One of the things I would look at, and you mentioned earlier, is what if you have one employee that's got, that's, that can't attract the donation? And what if that employee is in a distinct minority? They're a racial demographic, a religious demographic, where they ain't got any friends? And then have we created potentially discrimination issue because this person that doesn't have any friends, whereas the folks that look like more people in the community got plenty of friends and they've known them in grade school and they just want to get a nation that's great. But I would look at that.
I don't think it would create a healthy working environment.
If, if that's your sound, I wouldn't want to make sure we're not kind of backing over the, the discrimination issue. And one of the things, again, if this is tabled, the way I read this in two different areas, if you're, if you have disciplinary action within the last few years, including the four attendance and then the four attendance is mentioned in the second place, that's an eligibility criteria. This is too rare, I don't see that there's any expression of that the way I read it. And that may be okay, you know, there's part of the lawyer that goes, that's right, I don't like discretion because that's how we get in trouble. On the other hand, it also means sometimes we can't make good decisions. And that'll only, because your, your guy's decision is whether you want that there or if you wanted to be discretionary, but it's my reading that if you've had disciplinary action for two years, in the last two years, you're not eligible. If you have, what does it say? If your, if your department had to verify that you've not been disciplined for leave abuse, you're not eligible. And I'm not saying it was good, bad or different, I just want you guys, it's, it's tabled in the view of just to understand that's, that's how I see it.
And just so the record, when I mentioned kind of feeling like discriminatory, I'm not even talking about, uh, race or minority. I'm talking about as in particularly sometimes we, these decisions can be based on who we like, no matter who they are. And we can let one go and the other not. And then you go two years, now you're not given any mercy towards maybe one year, but not two years, because you could go back two years. If, if say, okay, you just don't have it right this year, but in twenty twenty, you didn't have it right at all. So, now you can say, well, you didn't have it right at all in twenty twenty, so although we spared off in twenty twenty-one, uh, we're not making eligible. That's why I said, if you're going to put that in there, like you may mention of some specifics, that's why I would like to be more of black and white because it's not open to-
Okay, so let me suggest this, so why instead of saying that, saying that a year prior from the date of the approved FMLA, a year prior to that? Because in order for them to qualify for this to begin with, they would have had to have applied for FMLA and have that certification from a healthcare provider to go back a year from that date to see if they had been counseled for this place. And if they were, then they would qualify to apply for the bank. But if they had been, then yeah, they could go through the application process. Is that what you're suggesting? Is that what you're suggesting? Something, something like that, okay. Yeah, I mean, listen, you can do anything you want with it, I mean, it's. We're not due at all, I mean.
I have two more questions, just to bring it up. One, it's under four dot one five dot three is the, is third section down. Says that if you leave the city, your unused hours of sick leave annually, or a combination of the two, will be donated to the bank upon the termination of your employment, unless you are retiring and are classified as a sworn police officer or a fire person. So in that requirement is that if you are a police officer or a fire personnel and retired, then your hours will be donated, if you're any other employee other than a police officer or a fireman, your hours will be donated. Is that what that says?
Yes, because sick leave, remember, non-uniform personnel don't get paid out for their sick leave anymore, upon retirement. It just would go away, so in order to, for the city to utilize that time, you would put it into the bank, so that it could be donated directly to employees that need it, to help maintain the bank. Um, annually, non-uniform employees would get paid out for what they're owed, if there's a difference, that would go into the bank. Um, police and fire, federal law, it's pretty stringent dictates how you have to pay out their time, so the majority of their time wouldn't end probably being paid out if they're, if they're in a situation where they're retiring anyways.
So as regular city employee, someone other than a fireman or a police officer, basically, sick leave carries no cash value, is that?
Not when you retire. Um, it did retire to the policy being passed and changed last month, I believe, at the council meeting. Um, and you all are willing to change that, but I did have almost twenty eight thousand dollar check for a non-uniform employee when they left the city, so if that's what the city wants to continue to do, that's fine. Um, you would just need to, you know, amend that, add that back.
Well, I was just, in your example, when you were talking to Cedric, you were talking about him donating three hundred hours to someone, and then getting paid for when they left, so. Yes.
It counts a bit.
But, okay.
Now go back to the twenty thousand dollar check.
My employee, who retired, who worked for the city for many years, and we've had quite a few employees who've worked for the city for many years, as since I have been here personally, there have been checks had ten thousand dollars or more, that specific employee, their gross pay was up near around twenty eight thousand dollars gross.
So was that for sick leave or comp?
Sick, comp, and vacation. They got paid out for all of that when they left here.
Okay, and, and, and that's what I mean, did I just say?
I wish that could give a job on campus.
That's what I mean, I, you know. I agree with, uh, Captain, let's table this, the reason I said this is, uh, I met, uh, this man for twenty, twenty seven years, twenty eight, okay. Uh, the state has a catastrophic policy, okay? If employee has discipline and they file whatever it is, that employee still qualifies for that leave. It is bank, uh, upon, uh, I donated, uh, a dollar and I was seventy nine thousand on leave in Maine, in catastrophic leave, uh, in sick leave. And, and, okay, so I was at table this, and I was researching from the state, you know, getting some information from the state, uh, how to say it all right, and then bring it back to the table.
I would like to add, I appreciate that, um, I would like to add that I did look at the University of Arkansas, which is modeled after the states, that's how I prepared this, so it's very similar to what the University of Arkansas does. I did not write any of these policies on my own, they were all research. Every entity, every law that I could find was considered and read before these were prepared.
Understood, and I'm, and I'm coming from, understood, and I'm coming from the Department of Human Services, where, uh, we serve, we serve people. And, and I think with, uh, looking at our, our staff with the city, we should give them all that we can give them, however, if, uh, they have discipline in their policy or not, we should go with, uh, I mean, you got, you got cancer, uh, heart, heart problems, whatever problem is, that they need time, uh, to relook at this, so, uh.
All right, well, we've got a motion to title it, and Mr. Pierre, I'll consider your motion as a second. Um, so all those in favor of typing this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Thank you. We'll move on to item number G, discussion regarding NeoGo services. And, uh, this, okay, so I'm going to introduce this resolution, please.
I don't know if this, uh, we would reach the federal rules, but I don't know.
Mr. Parker, can you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of bringing my child over, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Resolution authorized purchase from NeoGo.
Okay, this is a, um, program that we can purchase, that allows, if you read the, the, uh, document dated March sixteenth, subject Hamid software, um, the two product options, that's the description. One is electronic forms, the other is electronic training model, um, and these, these items will benefit our public parks employees, parks employees, um, will also benefit HR. Do you want to speak about this thing?
I can. Um, e-form specifically will benefit the entire workforce. Um, it is making, and it's going along with our record retention policy, aiding and enabling compliance with that.
And IT in the box.
And what?
And IT in the box.
And IT in the box, um, making all electronic forms, uh, or all paper forms electronic. Um, so employees would have a login that's created for them with their personal, they would use their personal email for that. Um, they would have a login to the portal, to the NeoGo portal. Um, they would get notifications to their private email whenever a form is up for them to complete or fill out, or if their supervisor has sent them something that they need them to complete, um, they can go on there and request their days off. If their supervisor would then get prompted to go and approve it or deny it, um, it, it cuts out a lot of the paper. Um, once all of that is completed, those processes, they then get sent to HR. HR gets prompted to then approve, move it if they need to, sign off, whatever they need to do, and then all personnel files are stored electronically, so it would, depending on what it, what it is, it could automatically be prompted to go directly into that file, um, for retaining. You can set retention dates, um, for different types of documents, where the system will automatically maintain that for you. Um, it helps gather information, um, in the event that we have to gather a lot of information for personnel for retirement, um, all, all of the above. Um, Learn, Learn is a training module where supervisors or HR would be able to send videos with training quizzes annually for annual training in regards to harassment, um, sexual harassment, um, EOC training, um, in public works, um, confined space training, just different, various different trainings. Um, there's financial module, uh, training for, you know, finance departments, there, there's different types of trainings. There's even trainings on, on how to use Microsoft Office and Excel and different things like that. Um, so there's over, I believe, three hundred eighty nine different training modules that could be sent to employees, and they would be able to do those and accomplish, accomplish those on their own. Um, my goal is to set up, um, training centers with tablets and like kind of listening centers where employees can schedule with their department heads to come in and sit and log in and do that during work hours, um, if there is time. Um, this is to help eliminate disruption of departments and workflow in those departments, because, um, what we have been doing since January this year is meeting on Wednesdays, some Tuesdays, um, but mostly Wednesdays in this room, and we've been dividing up parks and public works, um, to accomplish these various trainings that they need. Um, senior center, I spent a whole week over there, so it's just, um, the way it's being done is very time consuming, um, but we had nothing before, so this is just moving us up into the twenty first century, trying to make it a little bit more user-friendly, I guess.
And you can see a lot about it, it's, number one is e-forms plus, uh, Learn for eighteen minutes, total is fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty one. Number two is e-forms plus one hundred thirty six minutes, that is twenty seven thousand seventy five dollars. The next one is e-forms only for twenty four minutes, ten thousand dollars. Learn only for fourteen minutes, for ten thousand dollars. So we left all this open, now if you, um, this is a, uh, this, uh, this program does qualify, I'm just saying, did. Listen, we're contracts, uh, so we don't have to bid, uh, and we left the resolution blank, so you could choose what you wanted, if you wanted it to go.
What is Learn only?
Is Learn.
But they train it only.
Learn is a train. Learn is training only, e-forms is the, all electronic forms, yeah. Yeah.
So you're saying you can get both, or you can get one or the other?
Right, yeah. And, and NeoGo has a wide variety of HR platform, software modules you can add. Um, these are two that right now they have a special going on of six months introductory period to see if you like it. Um, the city of Little Rock uses NeoGo, I went to their website, it's very, they use it for, they, they use their recruiting portal, which is fabulous. You, as an outside person can go to their website, you create your username and login for their NeoGo, um, recruiting portal, and you can go on there and fill out their application online, it sends it where it needs to go for review, um, through that, their HR department corresponds with those applicants. So, um, and I'm sure, actually, I'm pretty sure they use a lot of the other modules, but that's one that you can see as a private person going to this city of Little Rock, um, website, so, um, we would not be the only city in Little Rock that's, would be utilizing this. Um, I did have a conversation with some individuals at municipal, um, they are going to be trying to work with NeoGo to try and get some type of an agreement in place to try and get municipalities discounts in Arkansas. That just hasn't happened yet, it's in the early stages, so there are opportunities there as well. Like with IT in the box, we were able to get a, a member discount, so they're trying to get that agreement in place, so maybe in the future we could qualify for something like that also, if we should just move forward and have extra modules in the future, um, so.
Patty, which option is, would be your recommendation?
Well, um, I, I know that we have financial concerns, we sell checks and things like that, um, so I think financially, as far as that goes, probably option one would be the best option, however, if you're looking just at comparing what you're getting for what you're spending, number two is a great option also.
Number two, great extension, nine thousand twenty five dollars in your, it's spread out.
So you get it for three years, you're paying for your three years, plus you're still getting your first six links for free on both of them.
So, wait, I cannot add something, um, tell me about this, like, when we went over the, the budget information, the funding information, the funding information, when we increased that fifty four or five million, that for this year, that's only going to work in the setup. That'll be strictly administered, you can spend it. This will be invoiced out, the next time this is invoiced out, it'll be twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, right? At that point, we need to talk about actually dividing it out from the department. Getting a percentage of employees, you know, how many employees you have in that department, and dividing it out by employees. So for the purposes of this year's budget, and that amendment that we would make if we chose one of these, it would just be for whichever one makes the setup. The other, we could invoice.
So a couple of questions. These costs and fees are they determined by number of employees, number of training units, how is that, is there a set fee?
These are determined by their fair market volume.
That's not, I don't know what that means, we knew about.
You have a packet, each table, I put a packet in between each of you, that is from NeoGo. But to explain how they determine their pricing, I believe, within that.
But can you tell me how they determine this price?
They do determine it based on your population size of your city, because NeoGo is designed for public agencies. That's who they gear their software towards. So they have a price tier bracket, whatever you want to call it, for population size of your city, they base it off of that. Which is very similar to how IT in the box does their pricing also.
So any cities our size that use NeoGo?
I, he was gonna send me a list, and I just never get the list, um.
Well, I actually called, and they only pulled up one city, and they basically told me, Little Rock is paid bill.
Paid bill?
Oh, I remember that.
And said that they only use the recruiting.
Paid bill though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not anything else.
I know paid bills, one, Little Rock has it, because I specifically went myself to their website and, and.
Do you use any of their modules, or just the recruiting?
That I don't know, I, I don't really, he was going to send me a breakdown, but I did not get that far with getting that information.
My concern, when you look at your customer list, I mean, it's large cities, okay, and it's very expensive. So I called municipal lead to ask if there were others, so do we explore any of the other companies that do this thing? Sage, Paycom, ADV?
That are specific to public agencies?
Yes.
I'm not aware of those, I've been talking to NeoGo for over two years, so.
Well, municipal lead and Sage, they say that's what Russell will use, is.
Sage, is that an accounting software though?
Yeah, it's a new resource program.
Okay.
Paycom is pretty nice. And then, actually, municipal lead, we use Paycom. So did we look into any of those?
I haven't, I've looked at QuickBooks, I've looked at some others, but not those, I looked at Chroma, but Chroma's extremely expensive.
Well, obviously, I, I don't know what I'm looking at, but I did look at those sites, and it does have modules, very much like what I saw when I went to NeoGo. So for me, I, I would like to make sure that we're maximizing our investments, much like what we did with IT in the box, comparison to see what we can get, and not just say, okay, I'm signing off here, that's, that's my thing.
So does everybody feel the same, or?
Yeah, I, I don't know nothing about this, this being fifteen thousand dollars.
All right, so can I get a question, please? So can I get a question to this item?
I'll make a motion.
All those in favor, or titled in the slide?
Aye.
Those opposed? Let's move on to, uh, let's see. Item number I, resolution authorized, prepare for our straw. Can I get someone to introduce that resolution, please?
I'll reduce, suspend the rule, suspend my title only.
Thank you, sir, can I get a second? All those in favor of reading my title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Mr. Parker, will you agree to the resolution?
Resolution authorizing payment expenses for repair to rock, for repairs to Robert's Drive.
Anybody have any questions?
I think the motion makes it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, what?
Go ahead, I'm second.
Okay.
I'm second.
Thank you. Doctor Hilton, will you please call for all?
Clarissa Pace? Clarissa Pace?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Craig McRae?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
All right, item number J, it's resolution to amend twenty-two one three, improvement fund for Robert's Drive. Can I get someone to introduce this resolution, please?
I'll introduce it and recommend that we read my title only.
Thank you, I got a second.
Yes.
This is Tyler. Um, all those in favor of reading my title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Resolution authorizing purchase from NeoGo.
Any discussion or questions?
Move to the motion.
Thank you, I got a second. Thank you. Claudia Hardness?
Clarissa Pace?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Craig McRae?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
All right, item number K, resolution purchase map for planning commission.
I'll introduce it and read my title only.
Thank you, K, a second.
Sir.
Thank you. All those in favor of reading my title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. K, there are no questions. I mean, Mr. Parker.
It's too late.
I can just read it, you can not say anything. Resolution authorizing the employment of D S F GeoTechnology to provide certain services and products to City Monticello and City Monticello.
Questions?
I do call three proposals together, six to twenty back. Is that right?
Yes.
So...
What I think we should do, if anybody's interested, is the public property layer, which is twenty-five hundred. The current land use layer, which is sixty-five hundred. Digitizing paper land use plan map, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the, uh, aerial photography, which is a total of sixty-two, sixty-one, eighteen. That is less than twenty thousand dollars. And I'm gonna say, I'd like to do the water sewer line digitizing, but I think that, um, we just got the sixth year, this year, I'd like to, uh, clear utility, uh, our, our, our rise up and, and get a GPS location of all manholes and all the lines from here to here, but, and then digitize that. And I, you know, I don't know, it'd be great if we could get that done in a year. I'm not sure that that's actually doable.
Probably need to clear that, so it'll give you...
Right. Um, the sidewalk layer creation, I'd like to wait until we get the two sidewalks done that are, that are not, you know, started that project. Um, I think that, in my mind, those are gonna happen in the next year. We let that happen in a few years, that's happening. Um, also, the trail layer creation, we're, we're literally about to start the trail at the lake. And that is three phases, and this will just be thanks going. Um, but, you know, I hate to create, I hate to spend even a thousand dollars on it and then run the process of doing more. And we could add that term, term out.
So, can we do what you're recommending? Does that give the planning commission what they need to work and go forward?
It gives them a good start.
It does.
Okay. But how, how do we accept what you're recommending?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Mr. James, uh, the city's finance director informs me that that package is totaled about sixteen thousand dollars. And so, if we wish to purchase that, you, in addition to the acquisition, if it's presented, we'll need to weigh in to get requirements for that acquisition. Okay? We're under twenty for the world team.
Okay.
If I'm not in second, that's written in the resolution. It's over seventy.
But, so, you're looking at...
It's over seventy.
Okay, I, I presented it to him, one, I remember how, one, one thousand, depending on what package you do. So, you're gonna present it, attempt, attempt to propose directly.
Just to be clear to everyone, I would recommend that we, uh, do accept and pursue the mayor's recommendation, it costs sixteen thousand five, is that what the total was?
I think it was sixteen, okay, you wanna do the twenty-five hundred, or is it twenty-one?
The work rate, twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred. And the current land use layer at sixty-five hundred. Then the digitizing paper land use plan map is seven hundred and fifty. And then, the aerial photography, which is tax dollars, sixty-two, sixty-one, eighteen.
Sixteen thousand eleven dollars, sixteen ten.
Say it again louder.
Sixteen thousand eleven dollars, sixteen ten.
Okay. Got about that? All right, now, there are two resolutions that have basically the same thing. It's the second resolution that lays out... Oh, it's the first one, sorry. Why is the local competitive being required? Up two thousand dollars.
I'll just, I, I, I'm doing the sixteen, ten thousand, so, make this happen.
Sixteen thousand eleven dollars, they just give a very good sense. Thank you, Dr. Hilton, will you please call for all?
Clarissa Pace?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Craig McRae?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next, we have, uh, item number L, resolution to purchase eight, five, technology, please. Can I get someone to introduce that resolution?
Thank you.
I got, um... Thank you, sir. Um, all those in favor of suspending rules, reading my title only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you. Mr. Parker, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution authorizing purchase equipment from Monticello Police Department in participation in the land program.
This is what she, uh, spoke a little bit about, and we, we talked about it last meeting, and it's been a question, discussion. Okay.
I'm gonna read out the resolution.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. Doctor Hilton, will you call for all?
Clarissa Pace? Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Craig McRae?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hardness?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have resolution to, um, handle all that money. Can I get someone to introduce that resolution, please? Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of reading my title only, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Resolution to amend City Monticello general fund budget to down.
Thank you, sir, can I get a second?
Sir.
Thank you. Doctor Hilton, will you please call for all?
Clarissa Pace?
Yes.
Cedric Leonard?
Yes.
Uh, Michael James?
Yes.
Al Pierre?
Yes.
Craig McRae?
Yes.
Mike Wiggly?
Yes.
Claudia Hardness?
Okay, last item on the agenda is a correction that we'd like to make, does not require resolution. Um, Vicki, you want to talk about this, or you're gonna be, or you're gonna... Okay, um, okay, um... An error was discovered in the twenty-twenty-one health commission budget, it was approved in the January meeting. Okay, the light truck project and grant was accounted for in revenue and expense sections, but was not included in the total. So, she's included a copy of the corrections, and will make the corrections in the system after the corrections are reported in the minutes of this meeting. Um, she met with Mr. Barton to verify the process, to approve the change. He advised us that informing and showing the council this change, uh, would suffice for, uh, information. That, ladies and gentlemen, is all.